Good evening. Today is Monday, April 8th, 2019. This is a special meeting and workshop of the Board of Education. If we could please begin with the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and we apologize for the delay in getting started this evening. We actually gathered tonight at 6:30 PM for our executive session only to find that we had a small, like a little electrical, almost fire, right?
Yes, a power strip. It was nothing, but we had to evacuate momentarily.
So we had enough in the fire, and we had very, very quick response from our fire department, our police department. So that was taken care of, but it did get us off to a late start. So I just want to apologize for keeping you all waiting. We're going to do the business meeting first?
Business first.
Okay. So we're going to start tonight with our business meeting. We did just adjourn from executive session, so we will not be returning to executive session this evening. And we will start with business of the Board. It is a special meeting, so there are not Board comments, although it's always open to the Board to make any comments. They're welcome to add in. Business of the Board. One, approve an IPA. Resolve to adopt the IPA resolution as attached to the official minutes of this meeting. Is there a motion? Taj, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Number two, approve an agreement. Whereas to facilitate the renovation in addition to Cottle Elementary School, Tuckahoe Union Free School District needs to assistance to remove furniture and boxes from the back to 15 to 31 classrooms on an expedited basis. And whereas the school district solicited written proposals for this work, and Q's Moving Corp submitted the lowest price for this work, and now therefore be resolved that following the evaluation and consideration of proposals received, the Board of Education of Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorize and approves awarding the contract for moving services dated April 4th, 2019 to Q's Moving Corp., 14916 14th Avenue, Whitestone, New York, in the amount of maximum sum not to exceed $19,050. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorizes and empowers the President of the Board of Education to execute on behalf of the school district the contract with Q's Moving Corp. dated April 4th, 2019 for moving services. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board, the Superintendent of Schools, and the officers and employees of the school district are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution and to cause compliance with the written agreement entered into with Q's Moving Corp. Is there a motion? Taj, second. Rob, discussion.
This is simply for, in preparation for our capital project, which will begin in full swing this summer. About 70% of our teachers down at the elementary school need to completely box up and vacate their classrooms. So this moving company will help accomplish that. And that packing, I believe, has already begun, and will continue over the next two months.
Is this expense part of the bond?
Yes, it's considered an expense of the bond, and we will include it as such. We would be eligible for state aid on it as well.
Thank you.
All in favor? Number three, approve an agreement. Whereas to facilitate the renovation in addition to Cottle Elementary School, Tuckahoe Union Free School District needs to create a temporary parking lot at Cottle Elementary School. And whereas the school district solicited written proposals for this work, and Acacella Contracting, Inc. submitted the lowest price for this work. And now therefore be it resolved that following evaluation and consideration of the proposals received, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorizes and approves awarding the contract for the construction of a temporary parking lot dated April 4th, 2019 to Acacella Contracting, Inc., 68 Gaylor Road, Scarsdome, New York, in the amount of a maximum sum not to exceed $25,450. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorizes and empowers the President of the Board of Education to execute on behalf of the school district the contract with Acacella Contracting, Inc. dated April 4th, 2019 for the construction of a temporary parking lot. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools, and the officers and employees of the school district are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution and to cause compliance with the written agreement entered into with Acacella Contracting, Inc. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Taj, discussion.
Basically, what this will accomplish is creating a temporary parking lot on the Cottle playfield. On the side closest to Middle Road, we will have about 60 feet of the field taken away. There'll be a temporary fence. There'll be an entrance cut in from middle, and we should be able to accommodate about 50 cars. We think it's necessary because Cyronoy Country Club is doing a major capital project simultaneously with ours. Currently, our Cottle staff is able to use Cyronoy for parking. They will all be displaced in about a month. So over the April break, we will create temporary parking, and that'll remain for into the beginning of next school year. And then after the construction project winds down, we will then replace and put the field back with renovations and a new condition.
Could you just, I'm sorry, Carl, repeating it. What portion of the field is going to be blocked off?
So this is the Cottle field closest to Middle Road. There'll be a fence all the way across, basically parallel to Middle Road, and it'll be 60 feet from Middle Road in. So if you can visualize that, you'll probably lose about 20% of the field. About 80% will remain. So it will still enable us to practice and have recess down there, but we are taking a portion of the field.
Okay. And what kind of surface are they using?
Lee got all the quotes.
It's gravel or a Millings. Anthony looked into something that would be the most effective for that area. And again, this would be also as part of the capital project expenses.
All in favor? Number four, approve a merger. Resolve to approve an agreement which sets forth the terms and conditions between the district and the Bronxville School District for merging Modified and Varsity Ice Hockey for the 2019-20 school year. Is there a motion? Taj, second. Rob, discussion. Okay, I will just say that we tabled this at the last meeting because we were looking for a little bit more information. The way the resolution reads, it gives the impression that the merger is just between Bronxville and Tuckahoe, but there are two other districts that do participate, and that would be Edgemont and Eastchester. And they are still participating. And the way, the reason why the language is written this way is because Bronxville is the host of the merger, and they actually hire the coach, and that is why the agreement is just between the two of us. We did, I did also ask what the finances were, and that was all been provided to the Board, and we're very happy to move forward on it. All in favor? Number five, personnel. Resolve to approve personnel actions A through H below. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion.
I would like to just thank the advisors who stepped up for the National Junior High Society. I'm glad we've reached a resolution on that. I think, you know, however we got to where we got to, it is what it is. It's water under the bridge. We need to move on, and as I said a couple of weeks ago, do what's in the best interest of the children. And I think this is in the best interest of the children. So I thank, I personally thank those who have stepped up to do it.
All in favor?
Before, because we're on all the points, right?
For personnel?
A through H.
A through H, yes.
Yeah, so I don't know if, Carl, you want to recognize anyone? We have a couple of resignations. We have a man teacher.
No.
No.
I think we're good just to block out it.
Okay.
Okay. Number six, approve architectural services. Whereas Cottle Union Free School District needs to replace the failed boiler in the Tuckahoe Middle School. You know, I'm just going to say, should I go ahead and read it? Because I think, okay, I'll go ahead and read it. Okay. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District needs to replace the failed boiler in Tuckahoe Middle School-High School. And whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District and Kyer Garman and Davidson Architects PC entered into an architect agreement dated March 31st, 2016, which was amended by the First Amendment Standard Form of Agreement Between Owner and Architect signed by the school district on May 8th, 2017, and by the Second Amendment of Standard Form of Agreement Between Owner and Architect signed by the school district on March 28th, 2018, and Third Amendment of the Standard Form of Agreement Between Owner and Architect signed by the school district on April 8th, 2019. And whereas the scope of work of the existing agreement as amended by the First, Second, and Third Amendments includes additional services as authorized by the Board of Education based on letters of proposal submitted by Kyer Garman and Davidson Architects. And whereas Kyer Garman and Davidson Architects PC has provided a proposal dated March 15th, 2019, and revised April 5th, 2019, to provide additional services under its existing agreement as amended, the architectural services related to the replacement of the failed boiler in Tuckahoe Middle School-High School, including but not limited to preparation of construction documents and specifications suitable for permitting, construction, construction administration services, and preparation of documentation for the New York State Education Department to be built hourly for the time spent providing such services up to a sum not to exceed $29,500. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves the proposal of Kyer Garman and Davidson Architects dated March 15th, 2019, and revised April 5th, 2019, to provide additional architectural services under its existing agreement as amended for the replacement of failed boiler in the Tuckahoe Middle School-High School that will be built hourly up to a sum not to exceed $29,500. And be it further resolved, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorize and empowers the President of the Board to execute the proposal of Kyer Garman and Davidson Architects PC dated March 15th, 2019, and revised March 5th, 2019, for the replacement of the failed boiler in the Tuckahoe Middle School-High School. And be it further resolved that the Superintendent of Schools and Director of Finance and Facilities are authorized and directed to execute any other documents required and to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion.
Yeah, so I guess maybe you could just help clarify for us. So my question is, if there were three amendments, right? So usually an amendment means you're changing a contract that you already executed. What was the sum, the maximum sum of the First Amendment? Because my guess is that it increased with each amendment, and that's now we're at the 29.5. Or is this the same contract, and it's just additional services, and they won't exceed 29.5?
I brought with me to clarify an email I received from Stephanie Burns regarding why she wanted to set it up this way. And she states that the existing KGND contract states in the scope of services, one of the things they state, is additional services as authorized by the Board of Education based on letters of proposal submitted by the architect. So she says accordingly, please ask KGND to add the amendment to the end of their proposal, which states right above the signature on the proposal that the services set forth in this proposal will be provided as additional services pursuant to the existing agreement. So what we basically have in the three amendments are additional services that they proposed, and the Board accepted, that we amended to their original contract in 2016 when they submitted to the district and came on board as the district's architect. This proposal here is specifically to address the failed boiler in the school district that the Board declared as an emergency project at the previous meeting. In order to move forward with that project, the State Facilities Planning Department requires that we have architectural drawings and additional engineering studies to make sure that the boilers are installed properly for the district. They allow us to proceed in an emergency fashion, but we still have to provide them with the drawings. And according to KGND, these drawings are more than just cursory drawings. They require a lot of engineering and architectural planning and discussion with the State to make sure that they're putting in place properly. They did agree to provide them on an hourly basis charge as opposed to a set fee, and they don't believe they would come close probably to the amount that they put in there, although they put that in there as a placeholder in case the design and the construction project was more complicated than originally thought.
Right, so maybe I asked the question wrong. I guess what I'm having a hard time understanding is, when we signed the First Amendment, or they presented us with the first contract, was the maximum dollars potential 29.5? And now they're just adding these additional services, but that maximum hasn't gone up? Or was the maximum after the First Amendment, because these services weren't in there, 15,000? And now that they had to do the drawings for the boiler, now they're saying it's amended, and it's going to be up to 29.5?
No, the amendment, the contract that we're amending is their original contract to do all the architectural services for the district, which included the capital project, the entire capital project, and anything else that we've added on in the interim. So this proposal tonight that they've provided us is just a standalone proposal. It has nothing to do with the amounts in the previous amendments or the original contract. It's just the way that Stephanie Burns feels it's appropriate to add it into the original contract that we have with KGND.
So now what's the total amount that we're into KGND for? For drawings? It's an additional up to, now we just added another 29?
This is an additional.
29,000.
Right.
I guess my concern is also, we have no idea what the replacement's going to cost. We've been told it could be anywhere between 150,000 and 700,000, and the cost of the architect could be up to 29,000 for the drawings. So it just seems...
It would be, my understanding based on discussions with KGND, that if it were a simple project, the drawings would be simple and would be priced as such. If it were the case where we had a very extensive project, and the $750,000 project includes major reconstruction to the steam system underground, if we had to go that route, which I highly doubt we do based on preliminary talks, it would be more involved, and there would be more design work involved.
What do you guys think? How do you want to go forward? Is there a way that we could find out? Like a midterm, like a midpoint? Like if we don't have to, if it's going to be a larger project, that you could come back to us and let us know? Because I'd like to let the public know, you know, what we're in for. So, because it's sort of vague to say 29,500, but it should, it could be less if it's a lesser problem. And I understand, we don't know. It's an unknown. But to be transparent and to let everyone know, I would just like maybe if you could come back to us and let us know before it exceeds, you know?
Whatever amount you like, right.
Half the point or something, I'm not sure.
I could have further discussions with KGND and come back to the Board and report on it periodically to let you know where we are.
This is able, this is able, right?
I'm sorry?
We would get state aid for this, right?
We would as well.
And the cost to do the repair will come from the reserve fund?
Right.
One of our reserves?
Right.
We did have this in the capital project though, correct?
No. It was in the original capital project, but it was...
It was in the original, we removed it.
So I assume the 29.5 is an estimate based on time?
Exactly.
How much time they think they're going to, but they're really kind of shooting in the dark, because they don't know.
They just don't know.
They just don't know yet.
Okay, so is the Board comfortable moving forward? And Lee will report back to us and let us know where we're at?
I'll worry.
Okay, all right, I'm comfortable with that. Okay, all in favor? Okay, we're going to move on to the workshop presentations. Our first presentation is a special education program update. Carl, did you want to discuss that at all?
No, I'd like to invite Mr. Joseph Spatola up. He has some key faculty members with him, and they're going to give us an update on our special education programs, K through 12.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Paul, for coming. Big crowd in the special ed. At least I'm going to tell myself. Mr. Albano, we're going to have to do this in the winter next year, so we're going to have the allergies setting in, so I'm going to apologize for the intermittent delays and try to get through this in one piece. It's been a whirlwind, eight months or so since I came on in July. It's been an incredible experience, the staff that we have working here. And thank you, so many of you for being here, has been fantastic. And I just want to give you a quick update of where we are and highlight a few of the new initiatives and exciting things that are going on. So our current special education profile, if you look, our classification rate sits at 11%, spread out very evenly across the three buildings. Male 60%, female 39.7%. This is all in line with the State averages, actually slightly lower. The statewide classification rate is about 15%, and we're sitting at 11. The national classification rate is almost 13%. Westchester Putnam, we're looking at 12.2% across the county. Classified students by disability category, we're spread out. Again, this is very similar to the State averages. We are a little high in both autism and other health impairment. Our learning disability number is slightly low, but overall, they come out pretty much in line. The speech-language number is actually almost exactly with New York State at 26.2% and 26.4%. I know talking with Mr. Albano, that was a number that had been historically a little high here. So that's come back into play now. One of the big numbers this year has been the 28 initial referrals to CSE. So far, we've completed 17 of those, and we have 11 pending at the moment. And again, we are with the State averages, a least restrictive setting. Many of our students are spending 80% of the day or more, and almost 80%, or pushing, between 77 and 80% are in the general education environment, more than 40% of the day. Projecting for next year, we did a lot of work, and this is an awkward setup, so I apologize as I'm turning back and forth. You know, working with the special education staff, we went all the way back into November and December to start saying, where are the cohorts? Who are the kids? Our school psychologist, Mr. Solivans here, Debbie D., our middle school guidance counselor, our elementary school psychologist, who is there? And I said, who are the kids? What are the groups of kids? What are the similarities? What are the differences? And that gave us an idea of who are we programming for. As January came into place, we met with every single special education staff member, related service providers, teachers, to really look at individual students, look at individual cohorts, and figure out what are we anticipating meeting for next year? Keep in mind, all of this is a projection. It's all, we will have CSE meetings as the year goes on, and these things can change. But we're looking at consultant teacher services in all three buildings, and that is, for those of you who don't know, the consultant teacher services must be delivered in a general education environment. They could be either direct, working with the student, or indirect, working with the teacher. They have to be specific to a content area, so I can't say that I need consultant teacher services in general. I need consultant teachers in math, or I need consultant teacher services in science, whatever it might be. Resource Room is a small group pullout, no more than five students. Again, working on IUP goals, working on specific skill needs. At Cottle, we have two strands of special class. We have our 12-1-1s. We have, next year, we're anticipating, and I made a mistake, and I apologize, we're anticipating a K2, a 3, and a 4.5 next year. That's what we have this year, is a K1, a 2, and a 3, 4, 5. But as the kids age up, we have a large second grade cohort which has to stay alone, and then that's going to force us to combine a few cohorts to stand with the 12. And then we have the AVA program also at Cottle, which is an 8-1-2. I think the highlight there is that that program is growing, and we are anticipating a middle school cohort coming up in 2020. At the middle school, we have our co-teach cohorts in 6, 7, and 8, as well as our special classes in 6, 7, 8, which are 15-1 special classes. Typically, the students from the 12-1-1 in Cottle will proceed through to the middle school and to the 15-1s. And then at the high school, again, we have a cohort that's requiring resource room. We have special classes. This is a little different at the high school level. At the high school level, we approve credit. You don't graduate, you don't get promoted year by year. You don't pass seventh grade. You pass sixth grade, pass seventh grade, pass eighth grade. When you get to ninth grade, you have to get 22 credits to graduate. You might retake a course, you might not, but you move on. So those special classes are spread out throughout the building depending on the needs of students. Mostly the regents-based courses, where the students need those five regents exams to graduate. And then we have our two life skills classes at the high school, which is a 12-1-2. These are the groups that are working in various community sites, from the botanical gardens to our local businesses and many places in between. All of our schools have related services, speech, language, OT, PT, parent training, and then we offer special class reading in all of our schools. Then we get to the good stuff. This is what we're going to get to see is what are our teachers doing, and how exciting is it? I'd like to invite up Jackie Tripodi. She's one of our speech therapists. She's working at Cottle, and through her leadership, we have instituted a peer buddy program that started last year and has really come into its own this year. The goal here is to foster relationships between the peers across different grades, mainstream, special education, anywhere in between. And how do we help them to understand that everybody has their differences, but we're all working together in a community? Students within their buddy classes in grades 2 to 5 are nominated to be a peer buddy. I'm going to turn over to Jackie. We'll do this much more, so it's not that long.
So once the students in the buddy classes are nominated, we send home consent forms to parents to make sure that they're okay with their children being a part of this program. Once we get the consent forms, I meet with all of those buddies, and we talk about what it means to be different, how to promote acceptance, how we all have things that we're really good at, and things that we also need to work on, and what it looks like to be a good role model. So I meet with each group of peer buddies, and we review those skills. And then we introduce them into each of the special education classes. So we've worked with Ms. Chiaki, Ms. Mizillo, Ms. Kosky, Ms. DeSimone, Ms. Gorman, and Mr. Simone, our gym teacher, who also takes some of the peer buddies with his adaptive physical education classes. And we promote different skills, social skills, following directions, perspective-taking, turn-taking, things like that, to prepare our students to go to birthday parties for Field Day for a variety of different activities that they may be exposed to. And we're kind of reversing what they do when we push into the buddy classes. And our peer buddies go into their classes. So it's a smaller environment, a more comfortable environment, where we can promote these skills. So we might work on playing board games, learning social party games, like tapas, musical chairs. Red Light, Green Light has been a really big hit this year. We work on scavenger hunts, working in teams. We might build different structures and sharing ideas, waiting your turn, you know, really cooperative play, pretend play, expanding after things, shopping, or going to a restaurant, things like that. And we've gotten really positive feedback from the buddies who are typically really excited to come. And it also helps the buddies promote their own social skills and leadership qualities. It's been going really well, and we hope to continue expanding it. We have some pictures. These are some activities in gym class, using the scooters and pulling each other on flights. Here we have some pretend play, musical chairs. We go out on the playground, showing the kids how to use different pieces of the equipment.
Thank you, Jackie. And I encourage any of you to come see it. It's really, it's awesome to watch it play. You wouldn't even know what's going on, because it feels very unscripted. As much work as Jackie puts in, when you see them working in class, it's a bunch of friends playing, and it's a bunch of friends working on things, which is really what we want. You know, this was something I felt very important to highlight, our 6, 7, and 8th grade skills classes at the middle school. I think it's kind of become ordinary in a sense that 90% of our special education students in the middle school and high school in the middle school and high school will have a skills class at some point in their career, many for several years, as they become more and more independent for 11th and 12th grade. But a lot of times, I don't know what goes on. It's on the transcript, it's on the report card, but what is it? So I invited our teachers here. They don't want to talk. So they're gonna, they trusted me to sell their program, so I'm going to see how I do on that. Give me a grade tomorrow. But Sloane Dale, Danielle Dwyer, Maureen Petralise, Michael Whalen, and Elise Fain all teach skills classes throughout the middle school, and we're integral in getting the information for this. So what is skills class? It's a class which is offered to special education students, supports the core curriculum while addressing the skill deficits identified in a student's IUP. And as we know, at the secondary level, there's a lot of material to cover, but we still know that our students are in special education for a reason. They need these supports, and they need these services. They have skills to build. This gives us that opportunity to remedy those deficits. Typically, skills meets daily for one period. How is this accomplished? These are very specific examples given from teachers. Using basic writing skills. So we have a student who needs to learn how to write a paragraph, or how to lay out a paragraph, how to organize. So, you know, complex sentences, using the content of life science, allowing students to review the content while they're addressing their sentence composition goal. Reading supplemental materials on relevant content and answering comprehension questions that gain exposure to important content. So again, we can reinforce what's going on in their regular class while working on the skill that they need to learn. Couple examples here on ancient Rome. Again, using various study skill strategies, vocabulary lists, flash cards, Quizlet. How do we define these different things? Some posters that were created. The scientific method. Connected writing to the writing revolution. That's a big deal here. How do we use a positive to complete each of the following sentences? So we're using the vocabulary that we're learning across different content areas, and we're studying the science. Again, here, this is a math. I thought this was the highlight to me, one of the best things I've seen so far. It's writing a paragraph to explain how to solve an equation. You've probably heard teachers say, math is turning into a reading exam or a writing exam at some point. It's no longer just about 2 plus 2 is 4. It's why is 2 plus 2 4? And how do I get there? And how do I go backwards? And this is now taking it another step further. How do I explain my thinking? And then, as students take some of these standardized tests and other requirements, they have to explain their thinking. So again, it all ties together. Checklist for paragraphs, one of the things you see in the Danielson rubric, that we use to evaluate teacher self-assessment for students. How do I assess my own work? By working on something like distance skills, students can now go through and say, have I got every part of an assignment? Does my writing assignment look correct? And then there's the everything else piece. Instruction modeling and support for organizational and time management skills. Electronic planners, scheduling the benchmarks for long-term assignments. I was still working on this this morning, so I did not plan my benchmarks well. Modeling and practicing study skill habits. How do we study? What do we do? How do we use different resources other than the study guide from the teacher? What can I do if it's not working for me? Supplementing core class instruction with different modalities of learning. So maybe we need to see a video on something. Maybe we need to read an extra primary source document on something we're learning in our social studies class. All of that is happening in skills class. This is what a planner can look like, and what are the different things we're doing? This is breaking down many assignments throughout the course of a two-week period. Later in the year, you want students to begin filling out these planners on their own. So again, it's not just the teacher putting everything out there for you, it's developing independence. How do I do it? We don't want to do everything for students until they leave. Did I leave anything out? Our pioneer team has taken off in the last month. We appreciate the support we have from the board in getting this off the ground, and Michael Whalen also coaches that team. So Pioneer Team, Pioneer Sports School League was founded in 1992. It's overseen by Special Olympics Hudson Valley. Teams play soccer, basketball, floor hockey, and volleyball. We made a concerted decision this year to start with basketball. We set out the soccer and floor hockey seasons, started with basketball. We'll pick up the volleyball next month, so that we can do this right and have a team. So we have seven students participating this year. We joined as the 16th team in the league. Next year, we hope to go for all four. You've never seen anything until you've seen some of our kids now coming to school in their full uniform, ready for their varsity game. We are undefeated. They don't keep score, but we are undefeated. They will tell me that, to this day. Couple highlights that I do want to give you. We have home games on April 23rd, April 30th. Hopefully, you guys can make it, 4 o'clock, in the high school gym. Therapy dogs, another one that we were able to carry over with the support of the board. Last year, with a grant, we were bringing therapy dogs into Coddle and Tuckahoe High School to work with our special class students. Therapy dog visits classrooms monthly to aid students with developing social interaction skills, building confidence, and following multi-step directions. There's research out there that shows that working with therapy dogs promotes self-esteem. It can even improve problem-solving and memory skills. Interacting with a dog for even a few minutes can affect brain chemistry and reduce stress. I think that's very important to highlight, as we've identified social, emotional learning as such an important piece of our strategic plan moving forward and the well-being of our students. I have a teacher in first grade who identified, when we have sign, that's one of the therapy dogs, come to our classroom. I've noticed that the children are more active, responsive, and in a positive mood throughout the day. Whatever the children are participating in pet therapy, an overall sense of comfort and calmness takes over the room. And then finally, in a partnership with athletics, we were able to take a group of eight students to the Westchester Youth Summit about a month ago. At the Westchester County Center, we joined 400 students from 46 local high schools to look at co-occurring disorders, again, focusing on the mental health and the social, emotional well-being of our students. Students participated in eight different workshops, so each student went to their own workshop with a bunch of peers, and then they came back and worked as a team. That group has now met twice since we've returned with myself and Mr. Goldberg. You're going to see a compassion wall pop up in the high school, which is a take-one, leave-one piece of, where's an affirmation for yourself, where's something good about yourself? You can do this. I need something to make me feel a little better today. I'm going to take a sticker, I'm going to leave. And our students have rolled that out. That was something they saw and they liked, so we're building on that. And that's the group that we took, and there's an example of a compassion wall at the county center. Can I mount a slides? And I think I'm out of breathing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, want to come back? Comments or questions?
Okay, well, let me just make a comment, you know, first, thank you. Mrs. Spatola has been able to really hit the ground running, but I'm looking out in the audience, and I see, although some of our teachers did not want to make the presentation, the real credit goes to the teachers, you know, and our counselors, and our psychologists. Special education in Tuckahoe is a true success story. Amazing things are happening. This is just a snapshot, and Mr. Spatola has embraced and also added a new touch. You know, I know the athletics program is something that he brought to the table, and I think it was certainly a wonderful investment to have one administrator overseeing special education, which has grown and which has been enhanced over the years, and people are looking at us. People are learning from us, and that is a testament to all the fine work of everyone. And I just want you to know how deeply I appreciate everything that you do every day with our children.
And I think a testament to the programs is that we've received 43 applications from about 10 school districts this year looking to place students in our programs. We have the ability to be very selective, and we've only accepted seven of those 43 students, because we want to keep the fidelity of our programs. But because of the work that everybody is doing, that's allowed us to be some, a district that other people look to. And I would say, on top of those 43, I've probably gotten calls about 10 or 12 other kids that maybe weren't a fit, and the package was never sent, but people are looking at Tuckahoe and saying, they're doing the right thing for kids.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, so for our audience and the school board, this is our third budget presentation, or my third budget presentation. We are looking for the board on April 23rd to officially adopt the budget, and then, of course, it may be our public vote. So we have a two-part presentation this evening. The first is more of a narrative, and it talks about the goals and the things we'd like to accomplish in the budget that we're presenting to for next year. The second part is more focused on the financials. So I've been through this a few times, and I've added a few slides based on some feedback from our community, via email, via people that showed up for previous meetings. We're going to elaborate and highlight a few key points in the budget. But I started with four goals that our district has established now, as the four main goals to guide our strategic plan for the next three years. If you look at, the print is a bit small, but social, emotional learning is one area of focus, diverse learners is another goal, contemporary teaching and learning is the third goal, and then professional learning to support all of our initiatives is the final goal. And this budget certainly supports all four of those areas. Some key things that we're trying to accomplish is to implement a guidance counselor, social worker position for grades K through 12, a district-wide SEL initiative. You heard Mr. Spatola talk a bit about that, but there's a lot more to come in that area. Also, district-wide PD, that would support our professional development goal. And then tonight, we approved an IPA. Our desktop computers are at end of life. We're still using Windows 7, that is being phased out, and we are planning to have new computers throughout the district through an IPA, which is part of next year's budget. Also in the budget, we're proposing a school resource officer. I'll speak more to that in a moment. Also maintaining the police traffic monitoring, and we've been working with them and giving them feedback on being active and continuing to move traffic along in the morning at the middle school, high school, and then later at Coddle. Also maintain our monitor coverage, which we increased last year, but it wasn't in the budget. We'd like to maintain that 28% increase in coverage. We've even added some after-school hours to our security monitors. Also, all the programs, the athletic programs that were added, the budget is not increasing, but we would like to maintain everything that we added over this past year. We'd like to have a transparent process. We work hard to provide transparency to the community, and it's been a goal for many, many years, the Tuckahoe District, since the implementation of the tax cap, has never asked the community to do an override, which is to go beyond the allowable tax levy. The enrollment numbers are, in my opinion, very desirable. However, I would like to point out, a few parents did question the decision to have four sections of grade 5 at Coddle next year. That would result in 24 students per class. If you look at this year's fourth grade, they are in five sections. The thought process behind that was that we prefer to keep lower class sizes at the primary grades. So we're looking at, for example, grade 2. Currently, grade 1 is in four sections. Next year, grade 2 will go to five sections and lower that class size. That class size inched up, I think, over the summer, and even into the beginning of the school year. The research does support, small class sizes are desirable always, but of course, it's very expensive. We do, the research really points to the benefits in the primary grades. So that guided our philosophy. We also looked at means on a grade level, and on all grade levels, and Mr. Spatola gave us some statistics before about percentages. In a small district, sometimes you have some data that shifts. So for example, our average is about 12 or 13% students with IUPs. On one grade level, you may be as low as 5%, on another grade level, you may be as high as 18%. That factors into our decision-making, and we're very thoughtful about it. The final thing that drove decisions this past year, and Mr. Marash and I worked on this together with Mr. Kilgally, is spacing. A year from now, we will have plenty of flexibility with new addition. But right now, we are still very, very tight on space. So even if we wanted to open another section somewhere, it would mean dismantling the library and converting it into a classroom, which we didn't like, because it would be a negative impact to the entire class school. So we did end up maintaining these class sizes, although some parents did question, but the recommendation stands with the Board of Education with those numbers. I will fast-forward just to look at middle school enrollment, and again, this is on the website, and I'll post this updated version on the website tomorrow morning. At the middle school, you see an average class size of 22 in grade 6, 24 in grade 7, 25 in grade 8. Grade 8 is one of the largest grade levels. At the high school, our overall enrollment is increasing, so we have a small graduating class of seniors, and we have a larger incoming 9th grade class. This is reflected in some of our requests for staffing increases, to make sure we're maintaining desirable class sizes, particularly in the areas of sciences. Dr. Linahan is working on maintaining manageable classes in our science lab, squishy seats have to move. We're maintaining all of the AP courses in the high school. These have been in place for quite some time. There was a time in our history where, I believe, the high school was reduced to four APs, with Dr. Linahan, due to budget cuts. We, over time, gradually built that back up to what I believe is a robust offering for schools the size of Tuckahoe, and we're proud to say that we're maintaining that for high school students. These are some of the high school increases to accommodate that growing enrollment that we anticipate. One section of chemistry, one section of global history honors, two new elective courses, one in architecture, one in digital art. Also, we have our thriving strings program, and we'd like to support them as our students move up into the high school. And also, three extracurricular clubs at the high school, audiovisual club, advanced strings ensemble, and then the pioneer league, which Mr. Spatola just showed you some pictures of. This is a summary of the staffing. I don't want to be repetitive, but you can see everything listed that I just reviewed. Additional staffing, all to maintain very desirable class sizes, I believe, throughout the district. There's some questions about the SRO raised about a month ago, or maybe three weeks ago at one of our board meetings, and I thought I should offer a little bit more of an in-depth explanation about what the SRO would do. Basically, they're working in three areas. First, the SRO is an active police officer. They do carry a firearm. They will be here and show up to work in a police car, and they will provide protection. Hopefully, it's never needed, but if there is ever a true emergency, this person will be trained and able to deal with, you know, any real emergencies that occur in the building. The second area is as a teacher. So the SRO is someone who, we have many students who are interested in dealing with law enforcement, whether they go in and make presentations in classes, talk about legal issues, also maybe envision maybe running a club for students who may be interested in a career in law enforcement, also working with our staff, teaching that, many different industry strategies for safety, also possibly joining a phys ed class and teaching strategies of physical fitness or self-defense, and a health course, talking about, you know, DWI, and we do a lot of training with our high school students, especially leading up to the prom and before summer. So we envision a lot of education, cyberbullying, there's so many different topics that the SRO can be involved in throughout the district. Developmentally, you know, in a simpler way with our younger kids, and then a more sophisticated way as they work with our high school, all the way up to high school. The last category, I would describe their work as a counselor. Not the same as a psychological counselor or guidance counselor, they don't have that level of training, but certainly to provide some counseling to students if there's some conflict resolution, some mediation between students who may be, you know, having an argument or before it escalates. We see this person that's having relationships with our students, the students feeling comfortable to go to this officer and have the ability to diffuse things before they escalate. So to provide some light counseling, if it was something of a more serious nature, of course, they would have to turn it over to our psychologist or our guidance counselors, but we do envision a person providing guidance for our youngsters. This evening, what I've asked the board to focus on, I think we're, for the most part, I won't speak for the board, they'll have their moment to comment on all of this as soon as we're done, but I think, for the most part, we're in agreement on many of the things that have been proposed to the board. However, we did ask them to consider some things that we believe are important, but certainly come with a price tag and an expense attached to them. One is a recommendation that's come up for many years through our high school administration, and that is occupational education programs. Now, what that is, up in Valhalla, at the southern Westchester, Westchester Bosse's campus, they have a very robust op-ed program. Many years ago, we would send students who were not traditionally college-bound students to learn trades. They still pursued a region's diploma, but for half their day, they would go up and have hands-on training in a field or an area that they were interested in. To give you a little bit more of an idea, up in Valhalla, these are some of the courses that are offered. 3D art, animal science, architecture, interior design, or motive technology, I'll skip around a bit, not to just read off the list, construction, electrical, construction, plumbing, cosmetology, culinary arts. They have many, many strong programs that we simply cannot offer here in Tuckahoe. Dr. Linahan has requested five placements. The placements are costly. The tuition alone is about $17,000. There's two different versions. There's another version of smaller classes for students that could go as high as $21,000, but I think most students, it would cost the district about $17,000 per student. But in addition, there's a transportation expense. We are part of a consortium, but that expense is a little hard to predict, because it depends how many different districts join the consortium, and how many students are on the bus, but we're estimating that that expense would be anywhere between maybe $10,000 or $12,000. So we're estimating about $30,000 per pupil, and that is very expensive. But we do have a goal to support diverse learners, and we would like the board to consider that if not all five spots, you know, hopefully, you know, have at least maybe two or three. Now, I'm going to pause here, and I'm going to invite our high school principal, who's here, who's done more research on the topic, and give a little more background.
I think you covered a lot of it, thank you. Yeah, I guess, we have, currently, under the special ed budget, we have two students going to the Hefe Bosse program, occupational ed, and I can tell you, the self-esteem and confidence that they gain is dramatic, and we're requesting five slots under the general ed budget line. And basically, we are done for students who are high need. These are students who don't have choices in life. This is a chance for them to change their life. You know, we've been looking at students who basically would be in danger of not graduating if they weren't given this program, or they may graduate, and they would be at a community college, and really struggling, you know, some maybe some remedial courses. So this is a game changer. So this is a game changer for the students. The criteria we would look at is you have to be, you know, complete your sophomore, freshman and sophomore requirements, you know, shot of global history, English, math courses, physical education, the arts, and then basically, the student has to have an interest. As Mr. Aldado pointed out, there's an expense to this, and they really have to benefit from it. Next, they must fill out an application, and if they have to fill out the application, they would meet with the guidance counselor and with their parents and go through really the criteria and what's expected of them if they're enrolled in the program. We'll also offer to give an occupational assessment test to make sure they're on the right path and going to the right course. And basically, we use a selection committee of people's services, Mrs. Spatola, myself, the guidance counselors, Mr. Sullivan, to make sure if there is more applicants than students who we can go. So, you know, as I said, it's a half-day, they would be here in the morning or the afternoon, depending on what their program is. I can't tell you, you know, for these students, this may be, you know, as I said, a game changer. They will be, if they don't get these skills here, they may not have the connections that many of the kids, you know, from different backgrounds have with the trades, and they'll be out looking for jobs in two or three years without any skills because they won't be going to four-year colleges. So our opportunity here now is really to get them out there with a chance in life. Any questions?
I have a few, maybe we should wait until the end of the term.
The next thing I ask the board to consider, so it is not currently in the budget, is to revisit our transportation system. Currently, we run with five buses to transport all the students in grades K through 12, and most of those buses do a second run. So they'll drop off students, go back, pick up other students, and come back again. And at all three schools, we have places for the students in the morning and after school hours to make sure they're supervised and safe. We are, there is a recommendation, and this has come through all three buildings, through PPLTs, as well as our administrative staff, to go back to what we had many years ago, which was an eight-bus system, and then the buses do one run in the morning and one run in the afternoon, which is more efficient and also better for our students because there's less time, less downtime, particularly for the younger ones waiting in an auditorium. And I think, I think the parents have also kind of given into this idea that if my child has to wait, it would be easier for me to drive the child, but that has resulted in some real traffic congestion here at the middle high school. Now, this is a very costly thing to do. When we implemented this system about five or six years ago, it was a huge cost savings to the district, approximately $175,000 a year. Multiplied by five years, you get the idea that it was a lot of savings. However, if you would like to know what we believe is ideal, it would be to restore an eight-bus transportation system. To give you a little bit more information, the board did ask us to try to gather some information and poll and try to gain a better understanding of how many people, if we did make this huge investment, would people really use the busing system? Well, we did an online survey. Here are the results. Eighty high school parents responded, 116 middle, 230 elementary. Out of those, 27 high school parents said if there was an eight-bus system, a one-run, they would not drive and they would have their children on the bus. The middle school, 49 people responded that way, at Caudill, 93. Okay? Now, that could mean just the morning or just the afternoon. Not everybody does both, okay? So I wanted to keep that in mind, but the percentages of people who have at least said to us, that doesn't mean they will follow through on that, but they've at least told us through this survey that if we implement an eight-bus, one-run system, that they would opt to use the bus as opposed to driving. I also asked Mr. Morash to do some informal polling, and I'd like to invite him off because I know this topic has come up with his faculty, with his PPLT, and of course, with the Caudill administration. John, give a little bit more insight into it.
Appreciate it, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So as Carl mentioned, we did do a form of an informal poll down at Caudill, and that consisted of two consecutive school days. We went out during arrival and dismissals, and we asked people, you know, would you take advantage of the one-bus loop system and as a result, not either drop off or pick up during arrival and dismissal? And those results were consistent with that of the electronic survey. The informal poll reflected 76 percent of the people that responded would take advantage of the one-loop system and therefore would not drive to drop off or pick up. So some additional information. Sidewalk Wolf Art will, of course, soon become property or part of Tuckahoe Unit Three School District, and I want to thank Mr. Albano and the board for all of your hard work on that becoming a reality. I know that for the remainder of this year, the goal is to have our arrival and dismissal procedures remain unchanged, so still use sidewalk. However, going into next year, my understanding is the goal is to close sidewalk permanently, of course, have access for emergency vehicles. But with that, with that in mind, that would mean that all traffic during arrival and dismissal will be diverted to the remaining side roads, Crawford, Middle, and Ridge Street. Now, using the poll and the survey as a guide, that would reflect a significant decrease in the amount of car traffic that would have to be diverted to those additional side streets like Crawford, like Middle, like Ridge Street. In addition to that, like Carl said, we did talk about this at our PPLT, and all community members who are Caudill parents and middle school, high school parents, teachers, administration, we definitely also see the value in going to a one-loop, eight-bus system. And finally, as again Carl mentioned, in the auditorium, or I should say, for arrival, we have a group of students that will arrive 30 minutes before school begins. In addition, on the backend, we have students who stay 30 minutes roughly after school dismisses. And I have to compliment our staff who do an amazing job supervising the students in the auditorium for those 30 minutes after school, keeping students safe, supervising them, they do a phenomenal job. However, with that said, it would be far more ideal to have a one-loop system and a uniform dismissal time. So just a few additional points to share with everyone on this topic. Of course, we will respect the decision of the board, well, we will respect and implement whatever the board decides.
Good call. Thank you, Dr. Lynn. So John, thank you, and again, this is a challenging decision because we're talking about $175,000 in addition to everything, and this year, we are doing a lot. So I know this is not an easy decision for the board, and I respect that, but we thought we had, we had an obligation to present to you, you know, the benefits that we would see resulting from restoring an eight-bus system. So what I'd like to do now is invite our assistants who present for business to come up and give you the financials, where we are now, and then after that, we will open it up for some more dialogue and discussion. So, Ms. Lynn?
Okay, so now we'll take a look at the financial side of the budget. We presented this several times to the board in education. We've only made some slight modifications to the manors and assets in that section. So again, just to quickly review what we've discussed the past few presentations, the tax cap applies to all school districts in New York State. It was just made permanent by the governor in the final budget to New York State. The proposed tax levy is limited by New York State, and New York State provides us with the growth factors that we're allowed to use. There are two growth factors in the New York State tax cap calculation. One is the allowable growth factor, that's based on CPI and can't exceed 2 percent. It could be less. And then the other is the tax-based growth factor, which is a formula that's provided by the Office of the State Controller, and it lets us know how much of our tax base has grown and provides us with a slight increase based on that each year. There's generally a lag between when buildings are built and when we have, when we see an increase in the tax rate's growth factor, but we do, and that fluctuates when we're in year. The first factor is the allowable growth factor, that's CPI or 2 percent, whichever is lower for 2019-20, the allowable growth factor is 40 percent. The second growth factor, as I said, is the tax-based growth factor. It's the percentage by which, well, it's a percentage that the state calculates. For this full district, we were told that our quantity change factor for next year will be to multiply our tax levy by 1.0054. So we can multiply those factors and we can multiply them both together, and we will get our total increases allowable at a 1.0255 or 2.55 percent of our year-to-year tax levy increase. That's one of our revenue sources, the tax levy, it's our major revenue source. So when we apply those to our prior year levy, we multiply by those factors I just described, we have some add backs that we take out before we finalize the numbers, we take out some things, we have some back, and we discovered that our maximum allowable tax levy, which would require a simple majority vote by the taxpayers and residents of the district, would be 2.22 percent. And there is the calculation that the state provides us with that we go for each year and report back to the state. So if we increase our tax levy, the full amount to 2.22 percent, that would provide $620,000 of additional tax levy on the side of the regular. There is a tax, property tax relief credit that the state provides starting in 2016 that's fully placed in this year. It reduces the property tax burden for qualified homeowners, and if they are eligible for the credit, they receive a check from New York State as opposed to the credit on their tax bill. And a homeowner would be eligible to this property tax relief credit if you live in a district that complies with the property tax cap. You receive a basic or enhanced star exemption, you have an income of $275,000 or less, and you have paid property taxes in the prior year, and our proposed budget is compliant with the property tax cap, therefore, those qualifying homeowners would be eligible for a new tax check rebate. It has shown. The 2019-20 initial expenditure budget that the superintendent has proposed shows a grand total of expenditures of $35,482,700. That's a 4.29 percent increase over the prior year, and those are the five basic loops of expenses to show that although we have seen some declines in our debt service and intermodal transfer lines, the bulk of our expenses are in our general support, instruction, transportation, and employee benefits, and those lines are increasing contractually or improved program growth. The main budget drivers, as Ms. Aldado pointed out earlier, are some of the new increases that were proposed to the budget, the guidance counselor, the STEAM teacher at the elementary school, several positions in the high school for enrollment increases, some professional development increases for the new strategic plan goals, the SRO, the school resource officer, traffic control that's performed outside the buildings in the morning, pension contributions, health benefit increases, and we do offset that slightly by a reduction in the transfer of capital. As we are doing a capital project this year, we would recommend reducing the transfer of capital to allow for what we can really accomplish, readily accomplish. We have some revenue increases. We're suggesting that the tax levy be increased 2.20 percent or about $615,000. We are anticipating increased tuition revenue increases that even though we budget conservatively, we feel that we can factor into the revenue side of the budget. And we also are seeing, based on the final, based on the final New York State budget that was passed, we got an additional $14,000 on change from the state on our foundation aid, so I've increased the state aid to reflect that, and we are seeing about $106,000 here over the year in revenues from state aid. So on the revenue side of the budget, we are showing where we get our revenue, we see the bulk of it is from our real property taxes with the 2.20 percent increase. We are looking at small increases in sales tax and pilots, which are payments in lieu of taxes that some residential and commercial residential property owners pay. We also have charges for services that I'm showing as an increase for charges that we built to other districts for tuition. Also, some other revenues, we are increasing as well as state aid, this is probably up $106,000. So in order to balance the budget, in order to have the balanced budget that's required by the state law to equal $35,482,700, we would have to balance the budget by appropriating some of our fund balance, or in this case, $100,000 plus $1,709,236, or a total of $1,809,236, and that would balance our budget. That's an increase over last year of $1,438,656. And again, here it is just in the formula, that our baseline expenditure budget is $35,42,700. Our baseline revenues from all our revenue sources are $33,673,464, which leaves that gap of $1,809,236 that has to be funded. So to close the budget gap, we are not looking at any additional state aid. We have seen the maximum that we will receive for next year has already been told to us. We could reduce expenses or we could appropriate reserves, and the net impact is to prepare our balanced budget. If we use $1,000, I'm sorry, that slide has not been updated, that should be $1,809,236 of fund balance, we would suggest that we appropriate $1,709,236 from the unreserved fund balance and $100,000 from the ERS reserve. Those following bullets show the amounts that were appropriated previous years. And if we do use the fund balance to balance the budget, the rationale is that it avoids cuts that would be required to balance the budget, and it would preserve program and reduce further net interest. This slide shows a history of our fund balance and what's been used. The yellow shaded areas are estimates. As you can see, for 2018-19, we budgeted to appropriate $1,438, and if this is so, we will need about $200,000 to appropriate, so that would lower our year-end fund balance from $7 million last year to about $6,856. And next year, if we, if we appropriate $1,809, if our budget is tight and we don't have any surplus and we do have to dig into that, because we do budget conservatively, there may not be a need to appropriate all of the monies that we show, we could again show a decline in the fund balance. Again, that's all estimates based on the fact that we are being more, we have a more tight budget, and we don't see as many surpluses from year to year. What we still don't know for next year are how many tax search warrant petitions and judgments the district will receive. We get new petitions every year, and judgments come in when, you never know when the judgments come in, they can come in on a same-year basis or many years later. We also don't know if there will be staffing levels required that require changes to meet mandates for well-K-12, ELL, and special education students, or anything else that may arise. Here's a history of our tax levy and our budget. As you can see, over the last five years, our tax levy increase has always been within the tax cap and a five-year average of 1.61 percent year-to-year change. For the budget, we have shown various increases in the last two years in program and expenses, but our five-year average has been 2.32 percent. There is graphically, the lighter line on the left is the budget percent change, the darker line on the right for each year is the tax levy percent change, and the one across the top shows our enrollment growth. So as you can see, while our enrollment was growing, our budget and tax levy did not actually match that same pattern, but now appears to be doing so. Important things to remember, today is the budget review, the next meeting on Tuesday the 23rd of April is the date that the Board of Ed will adopt the budget, and then on And then on May 13th, which is the Monday, they will have a, the Board of Health will have a final public hearing on the adopted budget. And on Tuesday, May 25th, we will have the budget vote and test the election. That's the eligibility election. Remind you, please, to have a vote. And a reminder that we are now in two election districts in the district, and please call the district clerk if you're not sure where your election district is located.
Okay. First open, thank you, Lee, for the presentation. And Carl, I think we'll first open it to comments or questions from the board, and then if anyone in the public has any questions.
I have some. I have some, I guess, involving the bus, which I thought we had asked for before, but maybe it wasn't clear. Just a few things, if we know, like what is the, like the bus capacity? How many students can actually ride the bus? And I guess, are they full? Like both the first run and the second run? And another one was, are all five buses being used for the first and second run? I don't know if anyone has these answers now, I'm just putting them out there.
I can tell you, I'm sorry, I can tell you, we haven't completed the study yet, somebody might want to.
Yeah, because those were some, okay.
So I'll get that to you as soon as possible. But one bus does just do one complete run, it does not do a double loop.
Okay.
It's a longer run.
All right, well, I'll get to the next question after. Okay. And how many students, if we know this, are currently on each run, like the first run, second run, for each bus? To see if they are actually in fact full. And how long is each bus ride for each run? And what is the maximum amount of time allowed for each run? I mean, I guess, just to see if these buses aren't completely full, are we using it to the full potential? I guess is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I kind of have the same question about, you know, what the numbers, what look like now, because also, if we do decide to try this for next year, it also is good to be able to compare to what was last year, to see whether out there is, there's a, there's a real change.
Well, does anyone recollect, was there a concern back, was it the change to a double loop purely driven by economics? It wasn't driven by capacity? Do you know? Does anyone know? Like, because if, say, one bus wasn't enough.
Right, but the enrollment is higher now than it was back then.
Right, that's where, that's where I'm driving.
At the time, it was not about capacity.
It was purely about the economy.
It was, it was getting the most use out of the two hours that we were paying for the bus, because otherwise the buses were stagnant waiting to do the next ride. And instead, the idea was to keep the buses moving and obviously to save the money. That also was at the same time that we were doing technology for all students and putting a Chromebook in every student's hand. So there was a real benefit, you know, tangible benefit that year where we felt like we could save this money and put it towards technology. And so I think that, you know, it's very desirable at that time to do it for that reason. You know, it's a tough one. I mean, it's like every other person I talked to says, I know we did do the survey, you know, for it, not for it, it's really a very split conversation as to how parents feel about it. You know, I, you know.
I guess if we have the.
That they would ride the bus, yeah.
But if these questions are answered, at least we could say, there is no, you have to do it because we can't get the kids on the bus. But I guess I'm just concerned if buses aren't completely full, then maybe there's other ways around it than, I don't really know.
The second run, which is the more desirable run, is not filled that much? That's a big indication to me that it's not going to be utilized if we added more buses, right? Because just a lot of the man for that second run is the more, is the more advantageous run, and that means it should be somewhat filled or almost filled. That's not the case. If we're only filling those buses like 50%, then I don't have a whole lot of confidence that this is really going to do much.
Yeah, so maybe we can get the answers to that, at least we'll kind of be able to make better decisions.
My feeling, I'm kind of inclined to try it, because I think it's, I think it's a matter of safety. It's concerning me what's happening out there on the streets, you know, how much congestion we have and all the things that we're hearing about. And so my inclination is to say, let's try it for a year.
I guess what I'm looking, maybe we don't need that many, is what I'm.
We should have data, we should have that data first.
Yeah. Maybe we don't need eight. Maybe if those buses aren't full, we could fill those buses up and maybe we only need...
Seven, six.
Yeah, whatever. But that's why I'm saying, if these buses are not running full, if we filled up the five, how many more do we need, even based on the survey? That's kind of how I'm looking at it. Maybe we don't need eight.
Do you know if those buses, the second run buses are running full?
So what I can do is, I will get that data together for you and provide it to you as soon as possible. I do agree that the biggest benefit is the safety and taking the amount of cars that are out there now and decreasing that amount, especially once we close Silloin. I think that the safety is a big part.
Yeah, I guess our concern is that, you know, I know the poll's saying something, but it is the concern of will they actually use it, you know?
Understood, right.
And, and to me, if that later run is not being utilized that much, that's an indication to me that it's not going to be utilized.
Well, the runs don't, I don't think they run in the same location. So although they're double loops, they don't stop at the same places.
Okay.
So depending on where, you know, your first loop may be a particular spot, second loop somewhere else. So although I think the numbers are very important.
Right.
Yeah.
It, it may not help us.
Yeah, I can provide the data, but yet, you're absolutely right, Rob. I think it would depend on what would the routes be of if it were the eight buses.
But I do agree with you. I think I'm in favor of trying it. But I think in order to try it and then be able to assess it next year, having the data now of early, late, drop-offs, how many, and then look at it next year and have the same type of analysis.
Is this one of those, those types of things that, you know, you hate to put in a recurring expense and then take it back? This is one of those things I think that would not be a big deal to reverse if it didn't work, right? If it didn't work after a year.
If you don't use the bus.
Yeah, then maybe we just.
Well, then they're telling, right? If we're not using the bus, they're telling us we're not.
We'll be ready to adjust again, whatever the board decides, but you know, we go with the bus, so we'll be sure to keep, you know, hard data, close data on, starting in September through, straight through June on bus capacities and things like that, along with traffic.
The only other thing I will, I will add is, is our school community has, has changed. I mean, the, the Village of Tocco, for example, you know, to, to go down Main Street as compared to what it was six, eight years ago with all the development.
The timing of the routes is different.
Yeah, so it, it, you know, probably what we would put in place may, may not be exactly what we had six, seven years ago because traffic patterns have changed and our small little school district has experienced quite a bit of development, particularly down in the Village area. So, Lee, from our Transportation Department, we certainly can get the board, the ridership.
We have the studies and processes.
Good, okay.
That's a good point, right? I mean, what if we decided we don't need all, we could add more, we could do the single run if we don't need eight buses.
We certainly could. That was the estimate I got from the bus company, what we talked about, based on what their estimate would be for next year if we went to a single loop. And that was the estimate we gave. But again, if we only needed seven buses, obviously it would not cost.
And it could go up, right? It could go to eight. People may realize because Silloin is closed, they would rather not participate with the drop-off if the pickup was a little later in the morning, eight o'clock, five after eight, and maybe we need another one.
And then also, I guess, the question would be, if we increase the busing to eight buses, would we put that out for a rebid to see if, you know, what the competition looks like? Because I know we've been with the same bus company for quite a few years now, and now that it looks different, you know, it might be more competitive pricing.
We always, we could certainly do that, but you would always run the risk of having a more expensive result with it. Surrounding districts have seen prices go up substantially when they had to be good, but if there is a year, we don't, that's what we can do with.
All right. Anything else from the board on the presentation or questions on the budget? Go ahead, Pete. Yeah, anything you want to.
Do you want to talk about the BOSI, YACAD at all?
Whatever you guys want to talk about.
Yeah, so I had a few questions on YACAD. Just some more clarification about the process that we would go through in terms of determining which kids would be not suited for this program. Would it be more of an outreach on the YACD squad or some, kind of encouraging or is it kind of?
It's a combination. The guidance counselors know the students so well, that, you know, when they go in on the office and talk, I mean, the conversation, the first two years of high school we'd drift into, I'd like to, you know, go into cosmetology, well, we don't offer that, you know, or, you know, something like that. And the word would get out, you know, that, you know. So basically, we have six kids that we feel, and we have to vet them, obviously, but, you know, who would be, you know, a good fit. And, you know, I haven't gone through the process, but it hasn't been approved. So, you know, you know, that's the way, we know the kids that are high need, that would benefit the most, and, you know, since we haven't had it in a number of years, we'd start with kids who are the neediest and then, and then see where it goes.
So when you say high need, you mean these kids that struggle academically, that just are not doing that great academically, is that what you mean by that?
Yeah, they're, they, you know, one or two may not make graduation, and BOSIs would get them through, and, you know, the others may, they graduate. We, we, I think we do a great job getting kids up to the graduation line, but after that, I think, as I said in my, my, my talk, they're not, they don't have the skills, you know, it's a different world now, you know, you know. Con Edison used to hire people that, you know, at a union of 25,000, you know, 15 years ago, now it's 4,000. So, and they were looking for applicants, you know, everybody's subcontract, you know, everybody knows what the world is like now. So, and these are kids really would, you know, there's no uncle in the trade union who's going to get them, you know, who's going to get them in. They don't have those connections. So, you know, this may be the last shot for them to, you know, you know, really contribute to society from their advantage. I use the word choices versus chance. These kids are looking for a chance. They don't have choices.
How'd you come up with five?
The Guidance Council presented, I didn't come up with it. Yeah, I, you know, they know their kids much better than I do, you know, it's within their needs.
So they base that based on what, they come up with that based on like how many kids they think from this year would be good fits for it?
Correct, correct. I mean, you know, you could, your kid, your new kid can enroll, you know, and they, you know, it's, it's flexible for sure. It's not a, you know, but any, you may look at some kids and they may, you know, they may have not the commitment we want, you know, so, you know, they wouldn't be allowed to go. You know, they may take, you know, the aptitude test and the occupational test and say, oh, wait a minute, you really don't want any of this, so, you know, if you don't have a high interest in going, we're not letting you go. And we want you to benefit from it. It's going to be a marriage here.
The aptitude test is good enough to assess that?
Well, I think, you know, you get done with teenagers, I'm not, you know, specifically familiar with it, but we've given to kids who've gone for BOSIs in the past, you know, it seems like the Guidance Council's words could indicate.
Has it, Dr. Lynn, has it always been a half-day program?
I believe there is, yes, to my knowledge, it's always been a half-day. They come here, try to meet the credit requirement, they go out for BOSIs, and they get academic credit and the vocational credit. So that's, that's a win-win for the kids.
Is it a two-year program? Like if they commit as juniors, it's two-year commitment?
Yeah, it's two years, they commit as juniors and, and, you know, they have to go for senior year.
So in theory, if we were to accept or adopt five, potentially, there would be five juniors likely?
Yes.
And then next year, you'd then, then if we wanted, we'd have 10?
Right.
Because we bring five juniors in and.
Correct.
Have we, is there, I mean, I don't know this and maybe it's not allowed, but what about like local schools? Like I know, growing up in Mount Vernon, they had a, they had a vocational program. Has there, we have a consortium for athletics, I've seen that, and other programs. Is that something that we could consider or send feelers out to see if there are neighboring districts, large districts like that, that have a similar program, that maybe there's some sort of consortium-type arrangement? Is that not allowed?
Well, my PPLT put together an analysis of, of the schools that do it. I suspect the big city school districts may have some in-house program. That's the, the purpose of BOSIs is really for, you know, the smaller districts to really come together and collaborate.
I'm looking at, of course, at the expense, maybe a trip to Mount Vernon, hypothetical, is probably less, and maybe it would, the cost would be a little lower.
But, Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, there is aid on, on BOSIs placements?
I believe there is, yes.
Yes, okay. So another advantage, Rob, is, is that we do, we do access aid for, for going through BOSIs.
How much aid? I mean, and that's relevant to this discussion as well. How much aid?
And, and I believe you receive it in the following year. So you pay upfront and then it's reimbursed, but, Lee, we can get you that.
That's relevant.
It's typically between 40% or 45%.
So half.
On the tuition. And what about the transportation, Lee? No, okay.
Well, that's significant.
Well, the other point though is that, you know, it's like just now, we know it's kind of an obvious point, but you just said before too, is that next year if we had five, it turned out 300, right?
Right.
Yes.
Right, but if there's aid coming from the year before, into the next year.
Right, so then every year that would be 300.
Wasn't in this year's budget, was the BOSIs aid reduced or did that not happen in the state budget?
Right, there would be more.
No, the BOSIs aid was low, it's a flat for the year.
Or, yeah, but isn't there a discussion about, from out of offering you to, to reduce aid out of BOSIs aid?
Expense for the days, there was that discussion, but they decided to say not to institute that.
Yeah, I'd be curious if there are neighboring districts who did it and if there's a cost savings possibly.
Can you share some, leave transportation with Eastchester?
Depending on the time you're working.
Yeah, it's all time. Eastchester, last I checked, had over 35 kids going, varying times, half-days. So, you know, there's buses coming through, so, you know, there's, there's a chance that might be some, some savings, but.
So, I want to ask an obvious question, I just want to ask it anyway, I think I want to ask it. But why would this not be advantageous to a good student? I mean, it's another trade, but I, I guess the answer would be, to confirm is that they would miss out on types of college courses, I'm sorry, courses that would help their college application be stronger, AP courses and exam age, they would not be optimistic to do that.
Yes, and, you know, as I said before, you know, our, I think the mission of the school is to get people prepared for life. And, you know, these are the kids who really don't have the choices.
Yeah.
You know, that's really, you know, I mean, if you're in, you know, doing decent in school and, and, you know, you have a chance to go to college, you know, we're not, if you give me 10 slots, I'll go there with you. You know, I mean, that's where I'm at, you know.
I guess, I guess I'm struggling with whether that's entirely fair. I know what you're saying, but, I mean, there are a lot of kids that go to college with a business degree, and then sell cable, go to work.
I respond that, these kids aren't, you're paying for AP courses, these kids don't have a chance to be in. So, you know, mother of a, of a child who's, who's maybe ineligible for BOSIs would say, I don't think that AP courses are fair. So, I mean, you know, we do a lot, you know, and we, we want to do it for the kids who are, you know, the high achievers, but this is for the kids who really, as I said, they don't have the choices of a lot of the students in, in the school.
What, what about, I'm just kind of thinking out, I'm thinking, we have our, now we have our internship program.
Right.
Have we considered maybe longer, like maybe a half-year internship in, with, with the trade, like with a company that offers electrical work or plumbing work or something like that as a possibility, to even, to offer it to more people, where then maybe there wouldn't be necessarily that cost? Yeah, but there'd still be the transportation, maybe there's some legal issues and liability.
Just from being up there, the, but the learning environment there, you know, and they're with other students and they're in a learning environment, unfortunately, I don't know if you guys all saw that, there's an invitation from BOSIs to see the program. It's after we adopt our budget, it's April 26th. But it's, it, what is offered, I mean, you can't debate it. The programs are amazing.
This is what they do.
Plus it's a certification too, when they finish, they actually get some kind of sort of.
And if you, I'm consistent, if you notice, to go on internship, you have to be, definitely graduated. And I taught that some of these kids may not graduate. So, you know, yeah, the internship program has been a big success for those kids who do have choices. And, you know, I mean, they get the opportunity, they don't get obviously the depth of, you know, of two-year course, but, you know, they have an opportunity to go out, and, you know, that is also life-changing for some of the kids, so.
Have we considered, have we ever considered creating a class for something along these lines? If there's space in the building? Have we ever considered running a?
But would it be enough? Would it be enough? Because you have electrical, then you could have beauty.
Well, I don't know, he showed 30 different things up there.
Right, but which one would you offer?
I don't know.
Because there, they have everything and could we offer enough?
I don't know, I'm just thinking.
I don't know.
Well, yeah, you know, let's say we go cosmetology, and then, you know, you have, you know, four kids, and then you're running it with all the equipment, and then you have the kids who would be doing, you know, electrical or something else, that they don't get the, you know, they're not interested in cosmetology. Like, as Michelle pointed out, this is what BOSIs does, it really.
You also have to bring the expert in that can teach it.
There's plenty of beauticians, right?
There's a lot.
Not certified, just that you can go that way.
Let me ask you something, if we're not able, we haven't really discussed it, but we're not able to give you five, let's say we give you three, right? But so how would you, how would you make the cut? How would you determine?
It's the same process, it would just be a little tighter, you know.
But you, but you, but you guys are the ones assessing who needs it the most, basically.
The committee would at the end. If it came down to a tie, you know, I mean, you know, the committee would get together. Mr. Stola, the guidance counselor, Mr. Salva, and see which was best for the kids.
Is there flexibility there? Like if we said three now, and then in October?
Obviously, yeah.
October we said, hey, you know what, there's a little more.
We have zero, we have a little more years, so.
No, but I'm saying then, say in October, we had room for two more for some reason. Can you add?
I don't know for sure, you know, we'd look into it if you gave it to us.
You're saying after the school year started?
Say after the school year started, it turned out we had more revenue, or we had an expense savings or something along those lines.
We might know that in the summer.
Joe's familiar with it.
They will roll admissions, but I think you have to look at what the timing of it is.
That's not ideal, yeah.
October maybe, yeah. After October, it gets a little.
Just good to know.
No, but I think it's a good point. If we have, if we have additional revenue, we might know that over the summer even, as early as the summer.
That would be helpful.
You know.
This is not about that, but I'm thinking along the lines of, like, if this is something that we feel is really a need, then like some of the other things that I was looking at, like, yes, it would be nice to have electronic signs, but do we really need it? If we could give it to something else. So, that was something I was struggling with because I'd rather see something for kids versus signs. It would be nice to have, like, to me, that's like a nice to have, not a need.
I don't think the signs are still being considered.
That hasn't, yeah.
That was something I questioned.
That hasn't made the budget.
Well, I have one other one that I'd like to bring out there is the traffic officer. I think it was 27,000, so that's another one that I think, do we really need that? Or have we gotten used to it and could we implement something else that would make more sense? Because I feel like then that money could be used in a better way that would go towards kids. Like using our own staff, and we talked about maybe changing the traffic flow or different things like that. So that, right there, that's $77,000 that could be used for something maybe, whether it be towards classrooms, whether it be towards our ed.
50 is not.
Right, right. No, it's not. Neither is the acc.
Correct, but the signs are, so we wouldn't, but we could save 28 by eliminating the traffic cop.
And look, maybe if you are considering the buses, and I don't know that you're there yet, but if there is, what we anticipate would be reduced drivers. And then maybe there is less of a need for the morning traffic officers. So, I mean, that is something to consider. However, again, you know, 175,000 for eight buses.
But maybe we don't need eight.
27, and maybe we could do it for seven. Lee will analyze it with her office. But maybe you can save the 27s. It's a good point, Cynthia.
Thank you, Dr. Lynn.
All right, thank you.
Okay, are there any comments from the audience? Anyone want to add or ask any questions or concerns?
I have a couple of comments. Whoever had the question about bus loop and capacity for the last run. So just to give you an example, my kids are the first loop in the morning and the second loop in the afternoon. I do not use buses because they pick my kids up at 8:00 in the morning and they would drop them off at 3:00. Where by that point, we're not ready to eat, and by 3:30, homework is done.
Right.
So, when you're talking about loops, like, again, I'm the first in the morning, but the second in the afternoon. However, when I responded to the survey, I said that if we went to one loop, I would use it, assuming that I would then be the 8:25 and the 3:00.
Right.
So, it might be helpful if we can do, if we can figure out what the pickup times would be and the drop-off times would be, and then ask parents what they would do. Because that would totally change my answer. Because if I'm still at 8:00 and still at 3:30, then I'm not going to use it. So, and when, so when you're looking at capacity or are they filled, it's not necessarily, you know, like it's, it's not necessarily like, oh, well, the second one is more desirable. If I had the chance, sure, I would go on that second one, but it's not an option.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm saying is that for those that are on the first loop, I can see why I'm allowing them to. But the second loop is more advantageous, so I would assume that if that was the case, then those would be pretty well popular. And then I would also would assume that that one loop is going to be at those most ideal times, the morning and the afternoon. If we're only doing one loop, we're going to do it at the best time, which would probably be more aligned with the second loop in the morning and the first loop in the afternoon.
But I think Allison had a point with finding out the times, because if you have more kids on the bus, you have no idea. What time it's going to be. That's a scary one.
Create a route.
Just put everybody on it.
Is we have to hire the consultant now as opposed to if we approved it. It's a very complicated, and it takes a lot of effort.
I mean, I think our fear has been putting it in and then people find out and then not use it. And then, oh my God, what a huge waste of money, to be honest.
So that it might be worth doing that study if we're considering putting that in. There is a possibility as well that if you eliminate two loops, one single loop will be longer and each individual two loops. So that pickup times and drop-off times might be better, but they would not be as if it were just one short loop.
Well, they'd be on the bus longer. They're going to be on the bus longer.
Right, I mean, those are, those are decisions as a parent, if I really could have made the decision, by the way, to really put my foot on that bus and my idea on those times.
Right, but that is something to consider. We could have more buses, but the routes could be longer.
They're going to be longer.
You could have a kid sitting on a bus for half an hour.
Right.
Right.
So, you know, do you want? Do you want your child sitting at school or sitting on a bus for 20 minutes? That might be part of the conversation. And also what Allison just brought to our attention, it was my understanding that that wasn't even happening. I didn't, I thought that the whole idea was that no, there would be no loops, that you were the first and the second. Because just in fairness, right, then your child has the longest day. So that really, if you're being picked up first, then that should be the route that you get, you come home first. And that was the understanding that I was under all this time. So I didn't know that that was happening. And when, you know, it was very, in the beginning, and there were a lot of kinks and a lot of things that needed to be worked out. And that was something that had come to our attention at that time, and I thought had been corrected. But as the enrollment changes every year, and the routes change every year a little bit, you know, personally, I don't think that should be happening. So, you know, that would discourage someone from putting their kid on the bus, because that's too long of a day. But should we fix that problem by spending 175,000 and having eight buses? I'm not sure. That's what, that's what I'm trying to understand. Like, are we doing our very best with what we have? Are the students in the best place in the auditorium? Should possibly they be moved into classrooms, separated? You know, all the things that we thought were happening, you know, we're coming to find out is not what was happening. So I just think that maybe we should look at other solutions in a parallel path. You know, not only look for other solutions or only consider, but look at both. You know, if we don't, if we don't go to eight buses, what are we going to do? We need to do something. It can't be go to eight buses or leave it as it is. Because leaving it as it is has situations like Allison just told us about. So I think that if we don't go to the eight buses, but we offer other solutions, then I think we can make a lot more, you know, parents happy. And I do think it's a quality of life issue, you know, I, I was all for it, but, you know, I'm not sure that I would also want what Allison just described for my child. So, I think that we need to come up with other solutions along with considering implementing the eight buses. And then weigh that, because it shouldn't be one or nothing. You know, do this or leave it as it is.
Yeah, you have some families too that like the 8:00 pickup because they both have to go catch a train.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, we've heard, we've heard both.
It's personal, what works for your family.
But would they know the time? Or do the bus companies sort of make their routes? I was a bus driver and we used to make our routes. You get your kids and you make your routes. And you make it what's convenient for the driver. That's what they do.
Well, I understand is when we went to the two-loop system, we had a, we had a loop consultant come in to set up all the loops.
Yeah, it's a software program. It identifies where all the students are.
Yeah, and what's going to be the best route to go. Yeah, that's, in the old days when we didn't have that, that's what I did.
The time on my letter is the time when the truck comes. All right, so that's that for the bus. I do agree with Carl's point that if we do go down to one, that the traffic will be a lot less, and there is a good possibility that we do not need the police officers. The police officers, the, the traffic safety officers. Honestly, they're not really doing what they're supposed to be doing. And if we're not going to follow through on making them do what they're supposed to do, then we just shouldn't pay for it. I mean, I want it because I'm crossing the street with my kid. But it's also extremely frustrating when they're not doing what they're supposed to do. And when they make comments like, we just don't want to be here, to watch my, my money just be wasted. You know, that's, that's frustrating me too. And I have, I've made many, many complaints on many different levels about that. My last comment is about the BOSEs program. I'm all for the BOSEs program. I have a cousin who just graduated last year from Mayimak Schools. She went through it. She just got her degree, her certificate, in being a makeup artist in the film industry. So, you know, it's not just your, your basic stuff. You can go on to do a lot more. However, she's not an at-risk student. And I really do have a very big problem with focusing on the at-risk students. You can have, look, I had, I had a kid who graduated from here. She was not the AP level kid, but she also wasn't at-risk. And yes, she's in college, but maybe if this opportunity was a little bit, you know, more open, it might have been something that she could have gone to. I mean, when I was in high school in Columbia, we had huge BOSEs, a huge amount of kids who went to BOSEs. And I have many, many friends who now own auto body, own auto body shops. And, you know, own their own care box increases and came out of school being licensed apprentice electrician. I mean, it's a really great program, but I do have a very big issue with only focusing on the at-risk kids. I really hope that we open it up to the kids who will make the most use and be the biggest success of the program and the money that we are willing to spend on the program. Not just the at-risk.
Which is a very difficult one to figure out.
It is, but there's, there's, you don't just have to focus on one level about seeing who's going to be the most successful. Who really wants it, who really, really wants this program, and who really feels that this is a passion that they want to follow for their life.
You just exactly summed up my concern about. Really, exactly. I think it's a great program. I think alternate education options is great. Just like you said, I mean, it's a great opportunity for.
Right.
I mean, I would love to buy something for my life for work. I think sometimes that stuff is more valuable when I have a desk. So, that's the problem I have. You can only do it for a certain amount and, and, you know, is it fair to turn people away?
Well, you don't want it to be something that's just somebody's hobby because it is expensive and it is educational. But you do want it to be something where the person really is interested in making this their career path.
I was a parent, I would not look at it as a backup college. I would look at it as, and I know that seems unsophisticated, but I'm just saying that, you know, today's day and age, just going to college doesn't guarantee anything. You know, so, having a trade in addition to a college degree is a good thing to have. So, again, that sounds a little bit like I want it all. I'm just saying that is it fair to say no to some kids who may, may be interested in it, because they're not, you know, highly elite kids, but. Exactly what you're saying, my concern. We can only do a couple, so that's the hard part.
Right, I mean, you, you just have kids who are completely eligible for college. It just might not be their interest.
Thank you, thank you, Allison.
Laura, for Taraway, Mrs. Samson, and Riverland. So I just wanted to start with, going back to special ed, if you don't mind, because it does tie into the budget a little bit. I just wanted to thank Joe Spatell for his presentation. I have a daughter who's in special ed here, middle school. And so I can speak to it a little bit personally as well as just kind of tie it in, which goes along with the budget. Before I do the special ed though, I just had another thought. With the pension and I just noticed, not on the one, not on the one that you actually have an attachment, but there was another handout, maybe last time, and it listed 3:30 and like the pension and the medical benefits. I want combined about $500,000 approximately. And I don't think that there's any leeway in that, right? So that's a big jump in the budget, that's an increase. And in addition to some of the other things that were on there, line items, that you don't have flexibility, is my understanding.
Contractual.
Contractual, right. So, you know, I don't know where the SRO came up or the officer outside and the bus being put back in. I think there's obviously pros and cons to all of those things. I just think, given the nature of these increases, I'm not sure why we're looking to spend more money on things that don't seem overly very necessary at this point. That's just my thing on that. Okay, back to special ed. So, one of the things that Joe talked about over this presentation and also in reading the budget, he mentioned about approximately 77 children in our district are learning disability. And I think the other, other health and care is the category. And that's kind of a learned disability also. In the budget, it lists that there are six children that are going to different schools and five in BOSEs. And I'm not sure what the difference is there.
Yeah, on the line item.
But just before you answer that question, so the total for those 11 children that go out of district, that live in our district, we spend about $1.6 million on those kids. And this goes to Joe's presentation, which I appreciated in the numbers and what he's been working on. I think it's a great addition to have a director of special ed. It was, it's been a long time coming. I think it's important to have somebody running the program, being that we spent a lot of money, we put a lot of effort into special ed in the school. But one of the things I think that we've been missing, and I hope that Joe does present at some point, is the numbers of those kids with learning disabilities and with other health and care. The sort of population that is in that skills class that he talked about, how are we affecting those kids? And we have ABA for the, for the children a little more involved, and that's a set program that's proven to help those children. I have a nephew who's autistic, who went through ABA training, it was wonderful for him, and we have that in this district, and it's wonderful. What we're missing, and what I didn't hear at all in the presentation, is what programs, what scientifically proven interventions are we doing for those kids that have learning disabilities that come into our district? Now, I know there's been things over the years that I've gone through with my daughter. But there really isn't anything set in stone in our district. And we have 11 kids we send out. Can't we hold on to these kids? Why can't we at K1, 2, have programs where we really intervene early and we keep those kids in literacy programs here that have learning disability? You're shaking your head no.
If you'd like me to, just to respond to the 11 students out, there, there was a time about five or six years ago where we had 28 students out. Which was far too high for our district. We did work on, on bringing as many students back to their home district, which is the law, by the way, the least restrictive environment. Many of those students didn't need to be out, okay? So, we did correct that. The 11 currently who are out do need to be out. So, in a small district, you just simply can't have every program for every child. So there may be a child with, with such severe, you know, medical needs, for example. Or, you know, hearing impairment, you know, and I'm not, I'm not speaking about any one of our individual students. I'm speaking in generalities. Or someone who is, you know, physically aggressive. We do not have every program. So in, in our district, the 11, I'm confident that those 11 need to be out simply because we don't offer the program for them.
Okay, so there are a lot, is it more severe?
Severe.
There's something that we aren't able to accommodate here.
Exactly, or.
Has something to do with the program itself?
Or possibly, there is only one within their age range. So, it may not make sense to begin a class of one. What we typically do is if we have two or three within the same age range with similar needs, we do consider starting programs. And that's, in fact, how the ABA program started. When there were a few TUCO students. So, your thinking is absolutely correct. There's a lot of money going out. There was a lot of more revenue flowing out of this district in the past. We've corrected that, but the 11 who are out now need to be out where they are placed.
Okay, so that's, I appreciate that. Again, going back to the percentage that he presented in our district that are, you know, have that learning disability or the other health and care, that generally it's usually a reading, writing type of intervention that they require. I feel that it's just something that we're lacking as far as a program in the school. So that was something, again, it sort of pertains to the budget. I would hope that, you know, parents don't hit fourth grade and realize, my kid is so far behind and no one caught it and, and, you know, there's a lawsuit or there's, I want to pull him out, I want this. You know, that does happen. It happens in every district. And I, as a parent member and somebody that does research for children with learning disabilities, and I've gone around Westchester, different conferences, is in every school district. But that doesn't make it okay. I do think that this district can adopt a program that's K through 12, and it's a Wilson or some kind of literacy, some kind of program, and maybe even two or three, depending on what the children need. But I can tell you that going through the special ed here, there isn't a continuous program right now. And when you get to the middle school, there really isn't a continuous program where they pick up and transition up. And if they do have the skills, and I appreciated him presenting that, and that's great, very helpful. But I just think that, you know, But I just think that, you know, you can offer more as far as early on, K through 1, 2, you need to really get in there. Studies show if you get a child before the age of nine with some kind of direct explicit instruction for those kids that are struggling readers, you can remediate and you cannot have them in maybe costing, you know, again, we want to go talk about money and also what's important for the kids. But my experience is that we didn't, you know, we didn't do that, and I don't know if we're doing it now, but I might, don't know if it's going to college, some in the middle school, but I do as a budget and as well as a what's right for the kids that do come in with those, we really do need to have established, have Joe come up and present to us maybe a year from now. We've implemented this program, teachers have been trained, and we're seeing these kids remediate and are no longer needing, you know, the IT support. I'd love to see that kind of presentation at some point, and that's my, that's my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, I think some of, like, part of the writing revolution is part of, like, what's used in, yeah, but maybe the question is, is it being, I guess, consistently used, maybe?
It is, and you know what? That's a great point, and it has been, but not with the reading and...
Right, with the reading component of it.
We do not have a consistent program.
I mean, I know there are a lot of teachers down there that, they came from Wynwood, right? Because we do have, it's a good staff. So, yeah, I agree with you that maybe look at how to utilize them.
I think, I think, you know, you're talking about something maybe with Dr. McDonald and Joe Spatola. So, we certainly can invite them back to do more on that topic. It's an important topic. Thank you.
One question about the pension contribution and the health. Is that the increase, 300,000 and 164, the double word, is that this year's increase? What is this number?
I believe the increase, yes.
Health benefits of 300,000, is that the increase?
Yes, it should be the increase.
Because I was looking for it here in the budget, I don't see it.
I know, I realized tonight when Rob, Mr. Cycle pointed it out to me that what I sent to both you and to the board was missing the last page. So, there's one in the back of the room? That's correct. And I'll correct that tomorrow for you.
I have another question, other questions that I was given, and this was, I guess, the third version, right? It was true that the budget committee got, and the one I got is dated Friday, April 5th. So, it's pretty much, essentially they're pretty much the same.
I'm sorry, did you say the budget presentation or the line item?
The line item, right. So, 2017, 18, those are actual expenses that were occurring, am I correct? That's right. And then the 2018 line column would be the adopted budget expenses, but not what the actuals were.
Right, we haven't finished the year yet. Well, no, what year is it?
18, 19.
18, 19 is...
Right, it would be projected, correct?
Would you show me which...
Well, let me help you here. We'll do you a little, okay? So, in 2017, 18, 16, 17, you made 164,000, 17, 18, you made 180,000. Your contract for this year, you make 189,000, yet it shows 180. And your contract for next year shows you make 198, 450,000, yet under 1920, it shows 189,000. So, it's incorrect unless I'm missing something.
The reason it's written that way is because at the time the budget's prepared, I have not finished my year's contract. The board usually decides in June what to project, whether or not to give an increase for the following year. So, I budget based on what we actually know, not on projection, because I have no idea of what that'll be. I serve from a year-to-year contract.
Contract that I have, Lee, that I got off the website, dated June 18, 2018?
That's correct. It's a two-year contract, but the board is only obligated for one year at a time.
It doesn't say that here. And it does say that your salary goes up to 198, 450.
If the board chooses to renew the contract.
Right, and you could, so you're figuring, you're not gonna?
I'm not figuring anything. I'm just projecting based on what we know.
Is it specific? I'm trying to follow it.
If you can follow it, okay. It says here, this contract has your signature on it, by the way you showed it.
I'm not questioning the contract.
So, it says 198, 450. So, we know what the money is. We know what you're going to pay. And you propose a budget that shows 189. That's a $9,400 mistake.
Okay.
I'm just, it's transparency, I'm just here for transparency.
I'm listening to you.
Okay. So, and I just, and another thing I just needed clarification on is 2017, 18, under certified salary for principals, it shows 921,621, $621. 18, 19, and again, 19, 20, it drops down to a half million dollars.
I'm sorry, where are you? I'm sorry.
Page three.
Page eight.
Page three.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
2017, 18, we paid nearly a million dollars for principal salaries, and yet the next, this year and next year, it cuts almost a half. It goes down by 400,000. And it's, I'm just curious, is it true?
Is that a recategorization because there's a column below that says salary non-instructional?
I have to check that.
For 300,000. So, it may just have changed their allocation. If you go down two lines below that, there's salary non-instructional, 323, 344.
Right.
I'm just, I'm not sure if that's it.
That's what it looks like, but I don't know.
It looks like, that could be it.
My last question. I know we just hired Lindsay Rose last week, like the last board meeting, and there is some sort of change in authorized payment. Can you tell us what that is? It was just loaded on a...
No, in the...
Treasury.
No, I think that was just the language of her contract. Was that not the language?
Yes, we just changed the retirement, so that it performs...
Yes, because there was, in the contract that we, in the resolution from the meeting where she was appointed, there was a change in the language in her healthcare upon retirement, I believe, was the difference in the language, and it was corrected in this.
Service salary is still 105,000.
Correct.
Correct, okay. I will leave you gentlemen, all my questions answered.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Under operations and maintenance, the last item, BOSI's services, is going up by 17,000. What do you think?
That is because that's where they reclassified our towers to be part of BOSI's services.
Especially our towers as consultants, right?
Okay, so that's better for us, correct? Because then it's eatable?
Right.
Okay. Okay, was there anything else from the board on the budget? Anything else, anyone else want to discuss?
Well, do we have clarity on the SRO and the allocation? I know there's been, we've had dialogue our last one about maybe seeing if the town would cover potentially more, and maybe we would get some help from somewhere else to reduce that cost.
I think there's two issues there. There was a little confusion on exactly how much the cost is going to be to us, whether that, it's, the 120 is an accurate assessment, right? Because we're talking about 184 days, what we talked about?
Yes, so, I met with Supervisor Calavita several months back, and we don't have a formalized agreement at this point, because we're still in the budget process, obviously. If it remains in the budget, then we will move forward with the town. But verbally, what we agreed on was a police officer, I believe, and I'm trying to go by memory, works approximately 245 days annually. What we talked about is there are 184 school days, four that are conference days and 180 days with students, coming up with a prorated daily rate of pay. So, we would only pay for 184 days if we wish to have them here on conference day or the person here on conference days. And that prorated would not only be the base salary, but it would also include all the benefits that the officers receive. So, based on that, Lee and I looked at the police salary schedule. I believe they are without a contract several years, so it could potentially go higher if a contract is settled retroactively. However, our estimate is between 120, and again, it depends, do you get an officer on one of the earlier steps or on the top step? So, there's some variables here, but we're thinking 120 is a good estimate, but it could potentially be a bit higher. That is a possibility.
That 184 days does not include vacations, Christmas break, winter break, Easter break?
No.
Not included in the 184?
No, those would be, were actually...
You're saying the salary's 120?
They work for the town, we wouldn't be paying for those.
Salary's 120?
The salary and benefits, and that's a prorated estimate.
Oh, you're already prorating it, okay.
That is the prorated estimate.
So, it's roughly 180, and we're paying for 100 and...
So, it's roughly about 72% of the officer's annual salary.
That's correct.
Which, again, I've expressed my dissatisfaction in that because I think the most popular model that you see out there is a 50/50 split. That's pretty popular, and I'm not sure why we're not doing that. I know that's what we were offered from the town, so I'm not sure how much flexibility they have on that. I know Eastchester's trying to do the same thing, but I've always been a fan of maybe going back to the town and seeing if we can do a little better. Now, ultimately, the cost is going to be passed on to the taxpayer because they're going to probably increase town taxes in order to absorb that cost, but that's a larger tax base, and it's a smaller amount of our tax bill, so I think it's less impactful than it is on the school taxpayers, you know? So, but, you know, it is, but that's, that is something that, you know, I've been asking that we can, we go back to the town and talk about. Again, it doesn't, there's no real incentive for them to back off of that, other than the fact that it's, I think, just fair, you know? It is, and SRO is still going to be doing police work here that we would otherwise call the police to bump in for. If there was an incident or something in that matter, we would call the police and they'd have to respond, right? So, that SRO is going to do that work. And it is just good practice, I think, for the town as a whole to have a police officer in there in the school system. Anyway, but it's, I'm comfortable approving the budget as it is with the 120 as a placeholder, but I'd like to continue to discuss it with the town. Because even if we approve, doesn't even have to actually enter into an agreement for 120. So, I think for purposes of the budget, it makes sense to just adopt it and as a placeholder and then continue to have that discussion.
And I think also, you know, quite possibly to have somewhat, either the town supervisor or a council person here maybe to, you know, let us know the town's position on it and have that conversation with the town, you know? And I think that that could be beneficial because it's a better understanding all around. And I, you know, I would put that out there as, you know, an option if we want to have more of a discussion about the agreement, because, again, it is, as you said, an agreement with Eastchester schools and Tuckahoe schools. So, whatever the agreement would be, I would think would be with both schools, so.
We can arrange that. We did some research.
Right, Bronxville and Palom does not have an SRO. Do we know if Eastchester has an SRO?
The town is negotiating, it's gave me the same offer.
Yeah, they're considering it along with us at this time.
We did do some research, I mean, she came up with three school districts that were not too far away, that have SROs, and all their arrangements were 50/50.
Yeah, Brewster, Byram Hills.
Yeah, one district had three SROs, and one of the SROs was, was similar to what was proposed, plus the other two were 50/50, and then the other districts were 50/50. And then some of the research I've done on my own, most of what I'm seeing is 50/50 as a popular model. So, I'm not quite sure why we're not getting that same deal, but anyway.
Yeah, we definitely can continue the discussion with the town. We'll call up and make an appointment.
Okay, is there anything else?
I would just, I think I kind of find myself in agreement with Ms. Howard in that paying for the traffic officer outside, which we really don't have control over, and the fact that is not effective on a consistent basis if we're looking to add some of these other programs. I think I would, my feeling is I would be willing to forego that. But I do, but I would really like to see the district come up with a plan. They remove the parking, maybe we put out cones so that people have to move up or something. I do think someone should be out there to help direct the traffic, and I don't know that it needs to be an officer, and we can use cones or horses or something that could make people follow the traffic pattern. But the policeman is standing on the sidewalk. That's not worth, inconsistently anyway. When they're in the street, it's great, but they're not in the street all the time.
It's not the same officer every day.
No, it's different. And that's fine, we tried it. I mean, I'm not, you know, but if I have to pick where we're going to save some money possibly and do something else, that would be a place where.
Agreed.
I, you know, I think we can do a better job, you know, enforcing changes in parking and traffic flow, and, you know, I think we just keep talking about it over and over, but we have not been consistent with a plan that will alleviate, you know, and again, it goes back to the same conversation with the buses. Is it because we haven't came up with a traffic plan that makes sense, should we bring back three more buses?
I think, I think it's a good opportunity with the anticipated street closure to just reexamine everything. So, you know, I think maybe even another traffic study makes sense at this point, and we'll examine it and...
I mean, those are the professionals. They make, they make the professional recommendations, and then we just have to follow them through. When we had, when we had a consultant here a few years ago, we did not have ownership of Cyronoi.
Correct.
And now we will. So, I think we need to, you know, I think that's a very good idea is to have the consultant come back and come up with... Go ahead, Allison.
We've been here, oh, that's setting the mark, because there are the cones up. Nobody's going to be there to enforce it.
Right.
Or to enforce that people who are supposed to be enforcing it...
Are doing their job.
It's all a waste of money. We have got to get better about someone being responsible or making sure that whoever is hired, whoever's responsibility we deem it is, is, has somebody higher up making sure that they're doing that part.
Right.
That's, that's, so it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if it's from some of the schools, or if it's the police officers. If nobody is above them watching to make sure that they're doing their job consistently, then it's all a waste of money.
Agreed, and I also think it's up to us to also be policing ourselves as parents, as, you know, members of the neighborhood. You know, I don't know why people think it's a good idea to pass cars when people are dropping off their children. You know, they're, we are all at fault also, you know, parents who are not obeying, you know, the flow of traffic, the drop off, and, you know, we would all like to get out of the car in the morning and have some, a few more minutes with our children. But, you know, it's set up that way for a reason, and we all need to be more responsible about following the patterns, because like you said, we could set them up all day long, but if we're going to be the own violators of, you know, what we're setting up, then we really have to be pointing the fingers at ourselves sometimes. So, you know, I think that's, it's frustrating, to say the least. Okay, what else? Anything else? Okay, so I want to really thank those who came out tonight to add to our conversation because I think it's really something we've been asking for and very helpful. I think this budget process, we've had a lot of dialogue. Sometimes the meetings seem, you know, informal, but it really is the board having our meeting in public, and it's our opportunity to talk about these things and to make these difficult decisions. So, Lee, we'll wait to hear back on some of the things from you, specifically about the bus capacity, and some decisions still have to be made there, and I think that's...
No, I just wanted to bring up one, because I think the more people who have come out and have emailed has actually then given us more to talk about, because at the beginning we can't, we're like, "Oh, my God, what do people think?" Like, we have our own ideas of what we think, but the more we hear from the community, it helps us make better decisions. So, the more people that give input, it really is helpful to make the best decision for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Pete second, Cynthia all in favor? Thank you.